115, item 6.9, consideration of an agreement to provide funding in support of the Build program facilitated by North Coast Opportunities in the not-to-exceed amount of $800,000.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. My name is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. On Tuesday, July 19, 2022, your board acted to allocate $800,000 in American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to support the activities of the Build project facilitated by Lake County's Community Action Agency, North Coast Opportunities, Incorporated, or NCO. This commitment was made in the interest of acting on two significant community needs: one, the inventory of affordable housing, and two, development of Lake County's construction trades workforce. The County of Lake is just one funder of this important program. Property owners also cover a portion of the costs of the work undertaken at a specific property, so the effect of your investment and those of others are enhanced by this network of contributions, if you will. The agreement before you today in the not-to-exceed amount of $800,000 formalizes your support of Build. Project objectives, outputs, and outcomes advanced by your board's commitment consist of the following: up to 30 participants will participate in Build training, and at least 24, 80%, will graduate from the program; 100% of graduates will demonstrate hard and soft job skill acquisitions, job acquisition skills, measured through a skills assessment conducted at the end of the training; 80% of graduates will secure employment; 100% of participants will be securely housed; at least two additional contractors will begin working with the program, and by the end of the project, at least 25 habitable homes will be added to the county inventory of affordable rental housing. I would now like to introduce Robyn Barra of NCO, who is present in Zoom this afternoon, and if she's not promoted to panelist, please, if we can do that. And she will provide an update on the recent successes of the Build project, and we're also excited that Derek Fiedler-Riddle and Michael Willis of the program are in the chambers today. Staff recommends your board consider this update and approve the agreement following any discussion and public input. And Robyn, thank you for joining.
Yes.
I, I don't have sharing permissions, and I will need that to play my video, so I'm going to go ahead and start speaking, and maybe we can work on that.
Okay, Robyn, if you can hear me, if you can accept the invitation to be assigned as a panelist in this meeting, then you'll have the sharing permissions that you need.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, sorry for that delay. Good afternoon, I'm Robyn Barra, Director of Community Projects for North Coast Opportunities. It's my pleasure today to talk to you about NCO's Build program. That's Build, building up individuals and local development. Build is a workforce development program aimed at skill development in the construction industry. We launched in 2020, and the program continues to gain momentum and support. We look forward to finalizing the ARPA contract with the county. We also just received additional funding from the California Workforce Development Board. This means that our anticipated program budget for Build will be just under $950,000. We're really excited about that, because in 2020, we started with $150,000. Our community and our funders have taken notice of this important program, and we are grateful. Like many programs, Build was developed out of need. NCO's New Diggs Rapid Rehousing Program was carrying really long wait lists, because we just couldn't find enough affordable housing. In addition, many of our clients needed work, they didn't have the skills. Build was developed to create more housing, to make housing safe and habitable, to give people job skills in construction, and to create a hiring pool for contractors who simply don't have access to enough skilled laborers. These needs are certainly still here, but Build is making a dent and changing the lives of the people we do serve. Technically, Build has been underfunded the past six months while we wait for approval, but that hasn't stopped us. As the Community Action Agency for Lake County, NCO has remained devoted to investing in this critical program. Project Coordinator Derek Fiedler, who you'll meet in a moment, has diligently kept the program running. All this work paid off, because we are now funded, and we just held one of our most successful graduation ceremonies to date. And with that, I will play a five-minute video for you, which will help you better understand the program, our outcomes, and our achievements. All right, let's hope this works. Here we go. And with that, I will invite Derek Fiedler up. He's with you in person today to answer any questions you might have about the program.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Mr. Fiedler, do you have anything to add before we start questions and answers, or want to provide the opportunity?
Yes, thank you. I just want to acknowledge just how grateful I am for the opportunity to, for the investment, and for the opportunity to invest in these students, because they, they're worth it. They're absolutely worth it. This was by far one of the most effective and motivated groups that we have ever had. And part of, as you can tell in the video, some of the things that they were able to accomplish in a short amount of time was just amazing. This was a unique, a unique cohort six, because we were under a tighter schedule. We started about a month and a half later than we normally do, and so our margins were no longer. We, actually, we graduated just a few days before Christmas, just to make sure that they were able to get absolutely every opportunity, to get their hours, and their experience, and their trainings in. And just with all of the new partnerships that we're able to form this year, and the work that we're able to do, is just, I'm just very grateful that we get the opportunity to do this for these people, these, these new leaders in Lake County.
So when this opportunity came to us, and we looked at it in our subcommittee, I was excited from the beginning. This is fundamentally changing lives, and it's a small scale, but it's going to have a lot of reaching effects. And, you know, having these cohorts, learning what they're learning, and then providing the housing for these families is incredible. And I'm really excited. I'm excited to move forward with this, and I'm just wondering if there's any other comments from the board members right now?
I just had one really dumb question from the video, hand tool tricks, and I'm thinking of juggling power saws. And I know that's not true, but I assume as part of the training, they learn how to operate tools safely, and probably learn some tricks, but I just had a question about the phrase. What hand tool tricks do you guys teach in your program?
Not a dumb question, very good one, actually. When I see that, the first thing I thought you were going to say was spinning a speed square the fastest, Ben. No, actually, some of those is, you'd be surprised that much of the knowledge is in the fine details, in the, in the trade, of being a craftsman, of being a construction worker. And so a lot of that actually would be a speed square. You look at it, and it's just, you know, it's a triangle, but a lot of people don't know how to use it. And so, one of our instructors, Michael Willis, is with us here. He's in-house, he's our site supervisor for the work that we do on the housing and the remodels. But we also have, one of our new partners is with Mendocino College. Because of our combined efforts, we were able to revamp their Intro to Construction coursework, which is now going to be available this semester. People can get the whole certificate right here in Lake County, as well as UCAIA. So the instructor, who's also named Michael, Michael Ross, he was able to show them all the different ways that you could use a speed square, to be able to, you know, be able to figure out a roof pitch, to making sure that you can get your layout for, you know, two-by-four framing construction, things like that. And so typically, they're called tricks, because there's little tiny things that could save you a half-day's work.
Go ahead.
I think you just, I think you just upped their insurance premium with that comment.
He said it was a square, he didn't say it was juggling with chainsaws.
So I appreciate that it's not just a, an idea of what you're going to do. I love seeing what you've done. One of the things that I was most concerned about when this came to the ARPA meeting was the fact that, would we be rehabbing rentals that are currently substandard but still being rented? Or would we be rehabbing houses that are not currently on, and all of the above need to be rehabbed and brought to par? A part of me was, at what point is somebody who's not taking care of their house that is renting it, that's making money off somebody, should get the help to rehab? But I see that in the agreement, it's to really put an effort in expanding the number of rentals that are on the market, which I really appreciate that that's on there. And I know that it's not possibly going to be 100%. That's not, that, you can't force that. So, but I was looking at the reporting requirements, and I'm wondering, I didn't see any specifics to what the reporting requirements are. It says something, "Brought to you by the County of Lake." But I want to make sure that we find out, how many houses were rehabbed that were already rentals, and how many are new? I think that's an important one, to kind of qualify, how did this program work to really expand the market? And then, of course, I'm, I see the numbers already, but I didn't see it in the agreement. The numbers you shared with us, with the number of trainees, number of graduates, what they're doing after the fact, I think that's really important data, again, because there's so much more to this than just the rehabbing of the houses. I mean, we're helping people get to a destination. Obviously, you did well in working with Mendocino and bringing back the construction class. I think that helps kind of bring everything together. Not only did you learn a skill, but now you have the potential of getting a certificate for that skill, which gets you into the workforce a lot faster and at a higher level, potentially. So all of the, I, I like it. It was very exciting to see my friend Jerome Snipes, part of the program. Haven't seen Frog in a very long time, but I've known that kid since he was eight years old, nine years old, lived across the street from me, wonderful family. So, seeing that you're reaching out to true locals and, and helping out, I, I think all of this is exciting. I would like the reporting requirements to be more specific. I don't know if they already have those specifics, but I think that will help us to really measure the success of the program in the long run, because I think it's twofold. It's the people involved, and it's the housing. And so, that's, those are my comments.
Anybody else? Oh, go ahead.
Seen programs similar to this before, and they, they've worked. They've worked really well. I really like the idea that we're, or that, not we, but you are training folks to do this construction, as we continuously have issues with, you know, contractors in the county, as they're going over to Sonoma County or wherever else they can conduct a more lucrative job. So with these young, you know, these young kids coming in there and doing this, hopefully they look at it from their perspective, after graduating to come and do more work in the community, take care of some of that, right?
Okay. Again.
Obviously, support the project. It'll be great to see with this large investment next year, what's been able to be done, already saw what's being done. So obviously, complete support of what's happening, because it really is. It's that holistic attitude towards, how do we get these young guys, or these folks going through the cohort program, to not only look at it as a job opportunity, but, just like you said, getting a bank account, you know, looking at the mental health issues, all the other stuff that needs to do it, and then just showing up, you know, learning that. I saw on there, somebody had a perfect attendance, I don't know which one, it went by pretty quick, I was trying to read it there. But those are all great things, you know, in building that young workforce as we try and rehab Lake County's housing situation. So I think it's, it's pretty unique, and I really like the way it's set up, where you're, you find the homeowner, they got requirements on the dollar amounts for one year to five years, depending how much rehab's done there, to really affect that housing opportunity for folks. So I am in complete support of the program, and we'll look to see what's being done with this investment that's being done by all of us in the ARPA program. Thank you very much for bringing this through, the committee that's looking at it. I know you're approached by all kinds of things. Heck, I think I even sent something back to you in my district to be reconsidered, but I appreciate support.
Okay, so I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the board chambers, or in the Zoom room? Is that it?
Hold up, hold up. Nothing in Zoom.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board.
I have a couple more questions.
Okay.
Just real quick, on capacity. Are you guys needing to expand your team in order to handle this new influx of funding in order to, because I know you have two years, and you shared with us what you've done over the past two years, and it's a whole lot less than what we're asking today. So just kind of curious how you're, you're planning to handle that, or if you've already been kind of setting yourself up for that expansion.
Yeah, so one of the, the big things that we've done is hired on Michael Willis, right here, which allows us to have a full crew of six. And then we are looking at ways to where we could have greater outcomes, as far as the amount of housing units that we can touch, as far as remodels, or even new construction as well. I'll just say, well, one of the things I'm looking forward to is getting together with the committee, and being able to, not just, how to say, like flesh out the details of the outcomes of, you know, what would be good goals, but then also expectations for the investment in this program, but then also to network with connections, and to see what other potential capacity building could be built, even, you know, right here with the committee. And then, really simply, like, we're doing things to where we can expand, and then we are hoping that we can be able to do more of the, the housing side, and do more work on remodels. For us, it's a constant balance of quantity and quality, because we have a new partner with the remodel that we were able to do with the rental. He was a, a new homeowner, new investor in Lake County, and that's a new rental that's going towards affordable housing for New Diggs clients that are coming out of homelessness. So that's adding to that stock. However, it needed a lot of work, and so that took over a month of our time, and an already, you know, truncated, unabbreviated cohort, that didn't leave us a whole lot of time to do another significant project. And so kind of balancing out, it's like, do we want to, you know, take on smaller projects, but, you know, have more of an impact that way, or take on a few less and be able to do, like, new construction and, you know, new units, as well as significant remodels?
And then I do have a request, I'm not sure if it's on there, I didn't see it. I'd love to get a report back a year later, what's been happening, maybe some of the struggles, some of the successes, so we can help each other out, to make sure that you're successful in your program, because we want you to be successful. We're not just creating this relationship and just kind of seeing what happens, we want to make sure that we could support you. That's something I would love to add to the agreement, if possible, to get a, a year in review. I'm actually really excited about where we can be two years later, because I think there's still a lot to gain in your efficiencies, and your understanding on how to better your program as you go, since it's still fairly new. Because I'm thinking, future-wise, we have a lot of tax defaulted properties, and maybe we could figure out how to do some rehabs on some of those. As a nonprofit, there's ways for us to build that relationship in different ways. So I think there's a lot of excitement that comes from this, want to see the success first and foremost, and then maybe we could talk a little further about what else, how else we can grow that relationship.
Great.
And since no one else seems to be saying anything, Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve the agreement to provide funding and support of the Build program facilitated by North Coast Opportunities, Inc., in the not-to-exceed amount of $800,000. And if I get a second, with the amendments as proposed for reporting and, and the annual report to the board.
Well, I'll second with a clarification, I'm just looking at the reporting requirement right now, which is kind of financially, and, and I noticed there's four tranches, tranches, I don't know how to pronounce that, but the, the funding comes out in sequence. I'm very satisfied, based on the video that's presented, that informal reporting on the success of this program will happen, but to the extent you want to hear more frequent updates, it seems like each time we switch into a new tranche of funds, there'd be an opportunity, at least, to report back, not only that the financials have been done, but we have happy workers, we have placed homeless people, we have something like that. So, it, you know, if, if you want to clarify what type of reporting, I think there's opportunity within the existing project agreement, as it's presented, that we'll get all the reporting we need, but how often would you want to do that? Every tranche?
I, I want an annual report, I want to make sure they have the time to go through a cohort, have the time to go through their process, I'm sure that takes time, so I don't want to get them back up here and saying, "We're working on," rather than, "This is what we've done." And I think that the overall reporting criteria of just the number of houses, and which ones were rental before, and which ones are now new rentals, to me, that's just final report, as typical for reporting requirements based on grant funding.
And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, so the, the agreement as currently presented does say that updates will be provided to the Board of Supervisors on request, and I think annual is certainly consistent with that. And also, there will be quarterly written reports, and staff will be meeting with NCO to ensure that we have understanding of what the content of those reports will be. I did take notes on the items that you were recommending, and we can certainly talk through that and ensure we get those numbers.
Do you want an annual presentation, is that what you're thinking, so that we can come here and see next January, how many homes, and how many families, and how many cohorts? Is that doable?
Oh, that'd be fun.
Let's do that. Okay, so.
I don't know if we have a second or not.
Can we start over?
Well, I mean, I'm just, you want to add it to the contract, so it's like, where does it go, and how long is that sentence? So the addition of one sentence to number two, reporting requirements, where it starts off contractor, shall submit quarterly reports in a format, that's for the financials, and then it ends, a final report will likewise, how about, we just amended to say an annual report will likewise be provided. And that's on.
To the board.
Paragraph two of the Build project agreement. So, instead of a final report, how about just an annual? Or it's, it already says, "Updates on project progress will be provided on request," so how about "Updates on project progress will be provided annually?" Would that be a good amendment? Would you live with that?
I muted herself.
Yeah, I'm waiting for county council.
Okay. Do you want it provided, or do you want it presented to you? Because those are two different.
Yeah, a board, an annual board presentation.
Okay, then, if the amendment is to "Updates on project progress will be presented to the Board of Supervisors on an annual basis," and that appears.
And the final report stuff is just, I think, details that can be added to the county format, that's already being prepared for stats. So I don't think we need to provide that in there.
Okay, then I'm going to second that as amended.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, Derek and Robyn, thank you so much for this work, it's really important work, we appreciate everything that you're doing for our communities, and we look forward to seeing you next year, although I'm going to get with you sooner. And I do love your emails that you're sending out, is everybody on the board getting them?
I don't know.
I took the liberty of adding you all to the, the mail list, so let me know if you're not receiving them, I'll make sure it's.
Will do.
Correct.
Mr. Willis, thank you for leading these young men as well.
You don't know how rewarding it is to see these young men.
If I can ask you to come to the microphone, because we want to hear you.
I can reopen some public, it's okay, we didn't close the item yet, right? So it's still open, and we'll reopen. Yeah. All right, here we are.
I was just saying, you just don't know how, how rewarding it is to see these young men when they first come in, and you have to interview them. Some of them don't have the best of living situations or background, but on the application, it says, "No skills are required." So for these young men to come in and put forth that effort, you see how many days they actually missed. You know, they were hungry, some of them come out of programs, and they put forth a good effort. Derek has a lot of classes going on, to teach them about the county, DMV. We had a safety class, they go to the college, and they were at the college. They go to the college and they were at the college taking those classes too. One young man, he got a job. Another one was promised a job. And it's funny about this program, it's supposed to be construction-oriented, but after you go through the process of all the classes and doing construction, your heart may not be in it, but with the training that they receive through Derek and other people coming in motivating them, two of them erode in the college. One wanted to be a drug rehab teacher and the other one wants to go another way. So it's rewarding to me to see them from the beginning until the end. And it wasn't always nice. If you've ever been on a construction site, you know you have problems and difficulties. But we worked through those problems and difficulties and they all graduated and they was thankful. And I'm just glad to be a part of this program. Derek is my supervisor. She's my boss also. I just started in February, but I think this is a good, in August, excuse me. I think this is a good program for Lake County and for the young men, because you and I know the poverty rate, the homeless rate, and what's really going on in Lake County. And if it wasn't for this program, I think that a few of these young men would be doing something else. And I'm just glad to be a part of the BUILD program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more plug is that our application for the next cohort is open for just a few more days. So anybody out there listening, you know anybody?
How do people apply?
The best thing would be to, they could go to the website, which is ncoinc.org/build, B-U-I-L-D. But then there's also a short link, a bit.ly/built, all caps, dash, apply, small caps.
Since we just approved a relationship with NCO with this, I would like to see us posting that, those links on our social media site, if that's possible. That way, that'll help out. Let's see, it's free advertising by doing a report to us, so it's perfect.
Perfect timing. Yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.